I'm going to measure it. Do I have all of this ready?
Yes.
I haven't been on the change of vote before.
Reorganization.
You want to add that to the consent agenda? Okay.
All right, it's 6:30. We're going to call this meeting to an end. Kenny, would you lead us in the pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, before we approve the consent agenda that you wanted to...
Couple things we need to add. We need to remove item E from the action items. There's no policy changes. And then we need to add our reorganization meeting since the election got moved. Our reorganization meeting has, we have 14 days. So that would be June 16th. So our reorg meeting will be at 6:15 on June 16th. And we'll have our regular Board of Education meeting following at 6:30. Is that okay with everybody? It's Tuesday night. Just meets that stretch order requirement. So those are the two changes for consent.
So I would need a motion to approve the consent agenda with the two changes. Removing E on the discussion action items and adding the new date for the June 16, 2026, 15:00 PM reorganization meeting. And then at 6:30, the regular meeting following. Kenny makes the motion. Does anyone have a second? Michael seconds. All those in favor? Carry six zero. Now I need a motion to approve the April 16, 2020 regular meeting minutes.
That's approval of financials. You approved it all?
Oh, there.
Just wanted to update all those things.
Okay.
Communications.
All right, communication. MSBA monthly report.
Hello, everyone, and welcome to the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report for the month of May. We thank you for the opportunity to share some news and information during a few minutes of your board meeting. We begin with a look at the digital divide facing many of our students and families in Missouri. Many school districts have turned to virtual learning to deliver education due to the coronavirus pandemic. A survey by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education shows as many as 20% of our students do not have sufficient internet access to participate in virtual instruction. Commissioner of Education Marjiva Vanheven tells MSBA that digital divide has been apparent for some time, but is now a bigger challenge than ever.
Obviously, when you're doing remote learning, there are many, many tools that we can use through the use of the computers we're doing today, having this face-to-face discussion. And that doesn't happen for some of our students who don't have that access. So I think that's one of the areas that we're finding the biggest challenge right now.
Vanheven says there needs to be a statewide effort to solve the lack of internet access for many students and families. She adds, while school buildings have been closed, education has continued for students as school districts have found creative ways to teach students even when virtual instruction has not been an option. While school buildings in the state have remained closed for the school year, the work of school boards, administrators, teachers, and parents goes on as school districts continue to find ways to provide education to students at home. The work of school boards and superintendents is especially important during the coronavirus pandemic as they deal with decisions they never thought they would face. MSBA's Associate Executive Director for Leadership Development, Phyllis Parks, says effective governance practices are as important as ever during this time, including the focus on school district goals.
And it's those, the foundation of what the community expects from their school district and what the board and the community and the superintendent and all the stakeholders have really come together to say, this is where, what we want to accomplish, this is what we want to achieve, and that should always be in the forefront, no matter what the circumstances are.
MSBA has posted a document on the role of the school board in responding to the coronavirus on the MSBA website, along with numerous other resources developed by MSBA staff and from other sources. Those resources are constantly being updated, so please check them often. In times of crisis and economic insecurity, rates of child abuse and neglect increase. Unfortunately, that has been true during this time of social isolation. Reports to Missouri's Child Abuse and虐待Hotline have declined by as much as 50% during the spread of the coronavirus pandemic. When children stay at home, they are isolated from places where adults often look out for their safety and well-being, including schools, childcare facilities, places of worship, and other public areas. Jessica Sykes is the Director of Public Policy for Missouri Kids First, a child advocacy and protection organization. She says her group is urging school professionals who are mandated reporters to continue to look for signs of child abuse even as they are teaching virtually. But during this time, other sets of eyes are needed as well.
We decided that we'd come up with materials and try to disseminate them to essential workers who are still seeing family, so delivery workers, groceries, pharmacies, those places that we are continuing to go and maybe a little bit that are open in our communities. So, you know, if you think, who have you seen today? If it's only the mailman delivering. So we realized we really had to get communications out there to try to get calls back out.
You can find more information on the Essential for Kids campaign on the Missouri Kids First website. Due to the coronavirus pandemic and the social distancing restrictions that have been in place, MSBA has canceled the in-person version of our Igniting Great Ideas Conference, originally scheduled for mid-June in Springfield. Instead, we'll be holding a virtual conference. Details about that virtual event will be posted soon on the MSBA website. And we'll also be holding our June Delegate Assembly virtually next month, when delegates will be electing statewide officers for the coming year. We'll be providing more details on that event soon. And we urge your school board to be represented at that delegate assembly. You can watch video interviews with the candidates for state office posted on the MSBA website. Plans continue for the 2020 MSBA Annual Conference in cooperation with the Missouri Association for School Administrators to be held September 24 through 27 in Kansas City. We're pleased to announce one of our general session speakers will be former Kansas City Chiefs tight end and current football analyst for Fox Sports, Tony Gonzalez. The event will once again feature more than 100 sessions and workshops, many presented by school leaders from districts throughout the state, all in a new location at the Kansas City Convention Center. Registration for the 2020 Annual Conference opens on the MSBA website on June 1st. School board elections in Missouri were moved from April 7th to June 2nd this year due to the coronavirus outbreak. But if you did not have a contested election and were sworn in as a new school board member in April, don't forget, Missouri law requires that new board members complete 18 and 1/2 hours of training in their first year of service. During the coronavirus restrictions, MSBA's free certified board member essential training will be delivered all online. After the restrictions are lifted, a portion of the training will be delivered online, with the remainder in a one-day classroom setting at locations around the state. You can register for MSBA's CDM Essential Training to help you become an effective board member of your governance team through the MSBA website. That's it for this month's edition of the MSBA Board Report. Thanks for allowing us to have some time and your board meeting, and so long from Columbia.
All right. Next, we have the Ava Board spotlights.
So we've had lots of ladies working since we've been out of school. Our last day in school was March 12th, but we've had ladies that are currently on staff, ladies from our community that have come in and done a wide variety of things. And I would like to recognize those two groups. Our first group is going to be our Bear Steen workers. Mrs. Primmer, as you know, is our director of our Bear Steen, longtime elementary principal here. She's been the Bear Steen director for five, six, seven, eight. Seven, eight. I knew it was a while. So she has ladies here that have volunteered to take care of kids during the day while their parents were essential workers and had to go to work. Could you come up and then introduce the people that you have with you today?
Yes, yes. Yeah, I can't praise these ladies enough because they, they're just right there. They're doing fun things with the kids. We lay some things on your tables so you can kind of see what we're doing. Some of them are teachers and they teach half a day. And some of them came in and we made like 500 packets and we sent it home on buses with the meals or we gave them out at the grab-and-go lunches. And so give the kids, and it wasn't just Bear Steen kids. It was any kids who picked up a lunch they could, they had a little activity to do and make. And so they've enjoyed it, but they're just dedicated to the kids. They want them to have something to do and stay busy and keep their mind off of why they're home. So anyway, yes, you want me to hand those out as I introduce? Okay, okay. Before, as he does that, we took advantage of Mark and we'd gone fishing once. And we're going to go fishing again next week, even if it rains, right? And then we, one of them got creative. Ms. Bonnie got creative and came up with a t-shirt plan. And you can see on the front of their t-shirts, it says, "Bear Steen 2020, Notice the Zeros Quarantined." And so they've been making t-shirts. They've, we've done smores and hot dogs. Just, they kept them busy. We went to the community playground today. And so anyway, I'm just very proud of them. I'll start off with Kelly. Yes?
I think we, so they've had to have breakfast in the classroom, lunch in the classroom. They've had to be careful about recess. So it's a change of, I mean, it's totally changed the way we usually have meetings.
Oh, definitely, yes.
So they've adjusted on the fly.
Yes.
Mrs. Primmer, I've got a bunch of restrictions on.
Yeah, when we first started that day, we, you know, we were, what do you do? But anyway, I wanted to recognize Kelly, if Kelly would stand up. Kelly is our, is my go-to person because I live, come on up, Kelly. I live 30 miles away and we start the program, she opens the door at 6:30. And she has stepped up and done a great job. She's been there every day and we've been doing it about 42, 43 days, somewhere in there. She's taken temperatures. We felt it was good to have the same person there every day. And so Kelly would come in, she, sometimes she stays and teaches for that day and sometimes she goes back. So Kelly has been my go-to girl. Excellent job, handled it, okay? So thank you, Kelly. All right, and then we'll go with Nova, Nova U-Banks.
She didn't see a couple of these places. Won't do a justice.
Bonnie Barnes. Bonnie's the one who came up with the t-shirt idea. And if you see, she just does lots of cool things in the classroom, as they all do, science experiments and crafts and stuff like that. We've got Sandy Merle. We've got Stephanie O'Neil. Stephanie, I want to brag on Steph because Stephanie actually attended Bear Steen when she was in elementary school. And she came to me one day and she says, "Mrs. Primmer, I want to work Bear Steen." I said, "Well, Steph, you have to be 18 to work Bear Steen." And she was, I don't know, she was middle school. And she said, "Well, I still want to work." So she volunteered for years. And then she came to me, we were, I don't know what, anyway, you were about to turn 18. And you came to me and you said, "Okay, so what do I need to do to teach next year?"
I saw her at McDonald's. I had another job at McDonald's and I saw her there.
And I said, "You have to get your background check done, you know, get that done before you can even start." So first day, well, I don't even know, it might have been before school started. She came to me and she said, "I've got my background, I'm 18 now and I've got my background check. Can I work Bear Steen?" So she's been with us a long time.
I'm 20 now.
And then we've got Marissa Randolph. Remember, Marissa came in and helped with our crafts on Tuesdays and we appreciate her. Kristy Elliott. Kristy Aldrich. My right hand, left hand, everything, Thelma. She does her snacks for us, sets them out, and orders them and everything. And keeps me in line, that's right. And Miss Trinda. Trinda Hammett. Also worked, that didn't get to come tonight, was students in McFarland. Okay? And Kathy Rader worked a couple of weeks for us and she didn't get to come tonight. And Trish Hall, thank you, I forgot who else. Trish Hall and Jennifer. Yeah, Jennifer couldn't come tonight because she had a concert. Okay? All right, so excellent group of people to work with.
See everybody? One, two, three.
Yes, we agreed to go this time. Thank you. Thank you. If you want to stay and watch the little representatives part of it.
Last, certainly not ladies, is our Nutrition Services staff. Carla, can you come out? Because you're going to have the total number of meals. I've lost count. You're going to be close. You're going to be closer than me.
I'm going to be close. I think it's probably close to 25,000.
We were over at 24 last time.
Were we? Okay.
So I had to push it 30 some.
I probably have pushed 30 then. I actually didn't, like, I apologize, I should have. I should have with this. This has been a new way to serve kids, let me tell you. It's been a quick lesson in being able to put meals out there, get them ready. The ladies have come in at 6 o'clock. We have buses ready to roll about 7:30. And it's a lot.
So we were at one, at our height, we had 367 kids sign up for bus tour.
For bus.
And each kid got four meals.
Three, four meals.
So if you just...
That's breakfast and lunch.
So if you think about that, you know, we were sending out close to 1,500 meals.
We would send anywhere from 2,100 to 2,200 meals on those days.
And they were ready to go by 7:30. So it was...
So, yes.
And you got to process them too.
Yes, we did. Yes, we did. Got real quick life. The week before, when we were on spring break, when I got word that this was going to happen, it was a little bit of panic, a little bit of panic. But okay, how's this going to come together? I'm a person that I have to see things, not go, oh, this is never going to work. How are we going to do this? And Marcela Swaddish come in and we arranged stuff. We tried to get stuff ready so when the girls come in on Monday, it'd be ready to go. And when they come in, they picked it up and we ran with it. And I'm really proud of them.
So, and we had some teachers volunteer.
Yes, we did. Gina Woods was there about every day. Marcela, we had Patty Nelson coming up several times. We just had several to come in. Who else come in?
You hit them, that's it. See all the time.
And then they ran the curbside because that left us, there was 12 of us in the kitchen. They detect all 12 of us getting things done.
You know, we had teachers come in.
Yes.
For pick up the work.
Right, right. And ride the buses. Dr. Dahl had volunteered to ride the buses. And that helped us tremendously because there's no way, we probably couldn't do it today. They had to kind of have us in the kitchen working. So it was, it was different, let me tell you. And as I'm leaving July 1, it was quite a way to go after. I think I could have thought of a different way to go without.
Ladies, we're going to recognize you twice, but understand it's a one certificate. So bring it with you and take your picture. Just print it out that one way. We're going to recognize you twice.
I'm going to start with Deanne Gunter. She is retiring this year too. She's working, she's my elementary lady. On spot, that's right. On spot.
So if you're going to retire on the spot, then...
That's fine, that's fine. Lisa Lofton. In normal school, Lisa does breakfast and gets that ready for everybody for our breakfast in the classroom. Anna Gahboa, she is our kitchen manager for elementary. Pat Epps, she is my, works at Mill School High School. Pat does the grab-and-go breakfast, she does the grab-and-go lunch. She takes care of the cars when they come back. She packs the meal, the juice ready for the next morning. Pat's busy constantly. Nova U-Banks. Nova is our cashier over at elementary. And she has been my coordinator for my buses. When the bus drivers come in with their counts and stuff, then Nova took care of that for me. Thelma Clayton works at the elementary. She is my baker and she has been good to bake and cook and do everything I need her to do. This, I missed somebody. This is just seven of us. And there's five more that could not be here. Mary Ann Scrivner. Norma Lakey. Yvonne. Honor Campshe, my kitchen manager at Mill School High School. And I missed somebody else. Oh, Jessica Willis, she works at Mill School High School. Those ladies all have made this happen, guys. It's, it's, they're great, they're awesome.
Listen, I know we've talked about this. We've got a lot of people taking on a lot of jobs. I don't know if we've got anybody putting in harder hours than what these ladies are. They've done an awesome job. We appreciate it.
We didn't have, nobody can, so we started.
Yeah, that's right.
Unfortunately.
We got, we got used to this, so it's a new moment.
Okay, next we have the principal and director reports.
Good to see you all again. So two things. One, over this period of time, I've been very impressed, not only with our staff, but with our families. Just a lot of people stepping up without being told or being asked, just doing it. And then tons of flexibility, but lots of conversations with parents and families. And it's a time of restrictions, a lot of uncertainty and unknowns. And everybody's been very flexible. And I can't think of any like negative conversations. Everything's been very positive, I think, working towards a common goal of meeting needs for families and kids. So I think that's been good. Second thing, we had our student item pickup. A lot of appreciation to our teachers who came and worked at the event. Many of them coordinated with their families, saying, "I'm going to be here Wednesday from 9:00 to noon, passing out student items, report cards, achievement certificates. Would love to see your student if they're able to come." And so parents pull out the park, we bring the items out to them. It's a chance for them to interact with their teacher one last time. Lots of smiling faces. And you could see on both sides just how much they've missed each other over the past several weeks. So that was a good event for them.
I'm going to go before him next time because he always says when I'm going. Since I haven't had a chance to be here for the last couple of months, I am amazed at how everybody has just jumped in and pitched in and it's been hard. It's been hard on our parents and our students. It's been a transition for our teachers. I never once heard a complaint. Everybody jumped in, what can I do? They were willing to, you know, on the fly, do these internet things as well as come in and make paper copies for those students who didn't have access. A lot of behind-the-scenes work went into getting our items ready for our student exchange. And that went from our secretaries to our custodians, getting everything organized and ready for us as well as teachers coming in and getting those items ready. I thought it was a great way, the best way we could, end a unique school year as far as our students getting to see their teachers one last time and our teachers getting to not only give students their supplies back, but also giving them their grade cards and the awards that they had earned during the year.
I'm Nathan How, the high school assistant principal. Haven't been here forever. Been a while. But same thing at the high school, working really hard at collecting Chromebooks from our students and then getting those items that they left at school back to them. That's been a long process and we'll continue to do that as needed. And just, and then getting building ready and trying to recruit numbers for summer school, things like that.
Mr. How, graduation June 12th, correct?
Got it, yeah.
I just write myself a note.
Okay, yeah. June 12th, 7 o'clock.
So Dr. Nash and I are working on kind of how that'll set up and what that'll look like. It'll actually look a little bit different. But we're going to do it outside at the football field, June 12th, 7 o'clock. So it's Friday night. And we'll get some more details to you. I know that she and I have had lots of conversation about what that will look like. More information is...
It's nice to see everybody. I'll say what they did. I'm just so impressed with all of our staff, parents, and parents. They were so flexible. We were still required to hold all of our meetings, but it just looked very different. We did lots of Google Hangouts, we did Zoom, we did conference calls. I'd have some on conference, I'd have some on Zoom, and we'd all just join in together. And everybody was very flexible and I think we had 100% attendance with all of our parents. They've been very gracious and, again, very thankful and willing to do any of that. And the teachers as well, they've worked very hard to continue to meet what our kids need. Thank you.
And then, oh, Mrs. Abor, it's already given her a report. So we're on to executive administration report.
So a couple, I have lots of things, but I guess I want to start off by... So if you are a parent in the district, you have received a lot. Probably is more communication than we've ever given out, whether that be through Facebook or surveys. So our first survey over spring break, Mr. Dalton and I sat down and started trying to figure out what we were going to do. And how many, so about 1,250 kids, how many surveyers, how many did we hear from? How many families?
We heard back from right around twelve hundred of our kids, which you may have heard me talk about, you know, normal return on our surveys is twenty to thirty percent. You know, we heard back from roughly twelve hundred of our thirteen.
And I, and I say that to say this, we've, you know, we've, our teachers have been great, our pares have been great, um, and all of our workers have been, have been awesome. Um, Mr. Dalton has created more surveys in the last, um, twelve weeks than any one person would want to. So I just appreciate his organizational skills, his technology skills. Um, he's tired of looking at surveys and creating, and getting the results back and sharing the results and, um, just a, a lot of work, um, but I just appreciate what they've done. Our administrators have been willing to, to do whatever it takes. You know, they help load buses, um, they help hand out food, it's just whatever, whatever has to be done, has to be done. Um, our teachers, I mean, they show up and what do you need me to do? You know, I'm here, I'll ride a bus, I'll pack food, they, they don't care. And I, I just appreciate that. I think I knew that about them, but they've showed us that in the last several months. So, that's the good part of my report and the rest of it is not good. So, we're gonna talk about state finances. Um, so, a couple of different things, so you have probably heard, um, the federal government passed a two point two trillion dollar bailout, you can go ahead and pull that up and I'll get to it in a minute. Um, and a portion of that was for, um, school districts, um, across the nation. So, they did that by, um, and how they dispersed that in Missouri was, we get a certain amount of title funds, which is based on our poverty, poverty level, um, and our student count. Um, we receive, will receive eighty-two percent of our Title I allocation. So that is four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars is what we should be receiving from, um, the federal government through the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So there's a two-step process, um, in that, um, you had to make application, um, so we, I made application last week, submitted it last Thursday, I believe. Um, so the state has that and they are currently reviewing that. You will receive seventy-five percent of those funds, um, seven days after approval. I believe we have been approved, um, so that portion will be three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. And then after, we consult with our non-public schools, registered non-public schools, so there's a non-public school in our school district, um, such as Mount Zion, they have to be registered. Um, and we have to, um, do a public notice, so we've done a public notice for, at the newspaper, we've done a public notice with the radio station and we've put it on our website and Facebook.
We've talked to representatives.
We've talked to representatives of both schools.
And we're, schools registered now.
We were only required to put it in the newspaper, but we felt like we needed to be sure that we had done our due diligence. They have until June first to register. Um, if they don't register after June first, um, the state will send us the remainder, point, the remainder of that twenty-five percent of the, of those dollars. If they do, then we have to go through a consultation process and Mr. Dalton has to do that with title funds anyway. You wanna tell them what that looks like?
So what that process looks like, you, you heard me talking about the federal programs meeting and our evaluation, as we try to identify areas of concern that we can try to address. So, when we talk about consulting with our non-public, uh, districts, uh, schools, it's just involving them in that process, uh, you know, identifying their students who would qualify for those programs, uh, and then basically allowing them to participate. You know, sometimes it's funding, PD on, for their teachers, uh, sometimes it's just access to the programs that we're able to put in place. Basically, there's working with those, with those districts, trying to meet with each of those kids.
They don't receive actual dollars, they receive service. So we wouldn't give them a certain amount of money, we would provide service to them.
On the federal side.
On the federal side's different, but on this side. So whether they needed some Chromebooks or they need, you know, we, we could, we would loan them to them for a period of time. So, anyway, so we're, um, still in that process, so. And then the county, um, received one and a half million dollars for COVID response, okay? So this was kind of an interesting deal, um, 'cause my fellow superintendents, their counties never contacted them. Our presiding commissioner contacted me right away, said, hey, the county's receiving this money, I'd like for you to come to a meeting. So it was, um, all of the school districts and the counties, so, um, Plainview, Skyline, Dora, um, and us were at that meeting, um, the health department, um, senior citizen center and the city. And, um, there are some guidelines on how that money can be spent. Um, we are choosing, so we have made application to the county and it's been approved for about forty, um, two thousand dollars worth of funds to provide, um, extra hand sanitizers, masks, and it has to be for COVID response. Um, extra hand sanitizer, masks, gowns, thermometers. So the coolers that we use, um, for breakfast in the classroom that have been on buses, there's five thousand dollars for those, 'cause they've loaded them on and off buses, they've been torn up. Um, and then custodial equipment such as, um, there's a mister sanitizer that you can go in, be in and out of a room and can be sanitized within two minutes. Um, some, some different chemicals, um, some different types of mops that are, that are supposed to sanitize better, another bathroom cleaner, that sort of thing. So, um, that stuff has been on order, um, so as soon as we receive that, BJ pays that bill, um, we will give that documentation to the county and they will reimburse us for that cost. So, and that's an ongoing thing, if we have more expenses, if that money's not expended, is it, they have to spend it or send it back? So if we have more expenses ongoing, um, we can apply to the county to get those funds reimbursed. So I appreciate that. Um, it was interesting, so Mr. Dalton and I, I sit on the commissioner's advisory council, Mr. Dalton sits in those conference calls with me, um, quite a bit, but I mentioned it two weeks ago and nobody knew anything about it. So our county, our county was willing to share. Um, I saw a Jackson county in Kansas City were having a big fight about their dollars. Um, and I think West Plains may be having that same, that same discussion. Their counties are not wanting to talk to them about it. It was a pretty simple application to fill out, we just had to have free bids for all the products and submit those and, so, anyway, I, I appreciate our county commission for doing, for doing that. So, all right, so, um, had a conference call with the governor yesterday, is that yesterday? Yeah. Um, so the governor had a conference call with all the superintendents who wished to participate within the state. Um, so when the state legislature passed a budget, um, two weeks ago, they reduced revenues or, or made cuts of seven hundred million dollars. Tax revenue is already down for the year six hundred and eighty-two million as of today. So that only leaves an eighteen million dollar buffer. Um, the governor believes that that next hole is another, up to another between five hundred and seven hundred million, so he's thinking one point two to one point four billion is the, is the gap. So he, um, is making decisions about how to cut between this fiscal year before June thirtieth and next fiscal year, how to cut five hundred to seven hundred million dollars. That's quite a task, he just, he doesn't have, didn't have any answers for us. We have another phone call June second with him, I know that he's going to announce cuts June first or second, right in there. So we are gonna take some more hits and I'm gonna talk to you about some that we've already taken, um, this fiscal year and next fiscal year. So I'll jump to that and then I've got a couple of other, um, things to talk about. So if you look at May twenty twenty, which is line L, okay? So, if, go to, I'm sorry, go back to K real quick. So, remember I, I talked to you about, we adjusted our weighted ADA, um, based on some attendance, um, issues, so, but if you look at the second line, which is the sixty-three seventy-five, which is the state adequacy target, and it had been trending there since February, and that's where we expected to finish the year at six thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars per weighted ADA, which is the fourteen oh four, um, which is the second line in L. So go ahead and go back to L. We received notice last week that the state adequacy target was going to drop to sixty-three ten, and it's dropping for a reason. So if you look at line eleven, if you look at classroom trust, where we've received, you know, on average of about forty thousand dollars, and April was a little low at nineteen, it is zero in May. So classroom trust comes from casinos and the lottery, okay? So that's how you, that's where you get your classroom trust dollars and your classroom trust, um, and your formula dollars are what drive your state adequacy target, so they dropped it to sixty-three ten. Um, so you can see what that revenue does, you know, that's about a hundred and fifty thousand, hundred and fifty thousand dollar in revenue off the time. Then if you drop down all the way to column, or line fourteen, if you look at transportation, so transportation, um, those dollars come from general revenue and lottery dollars. There was no lottery dollars, so that's not our transportation expenditure. Um, and that, so that reduced significantly. So, we're looking at somewhere around a hundred to a hundred and twenty thousand dollars less revenue this year. So, we're okay, um, because if you remember on the, uh, when we budgeted, uh, we budgeted at sixty-three oh eight, we budgeted revenue light and expenditures high, so we're gonna be okay for this year. Um, if you go to M, so M is just a scenario I threw in there, 'cause we don't, obviously we don't have our June payment. Um, so M is projecting next year, okay? Um, so, summer school goes into our weighted ADA, so summer school, I, we got sixty-one ADA out of summer school last year. Um, I'm projecting, I projected that number in half, so cut our summer school numbers in half, so that drops and you, and then you use your, you use your ADA for the current year or the previous first or second proceeding. So I'm using this year's ADA with half of this year's summer school, 'cause summer school can only be used in the current year. And I dropped the SAT to sixty-two ninety-four. So that, I originally had the revenue and the budget for next year at sixty-three oh eight, but after the phone call yesterday, I dropped it farther back to sixty-two ninety-four. So you can look at what that has done to our, to our revenue. Then you will see, um, transportation, they're predicting another cut in transportation, so if I figure five thousand dollars a month is what we're gonna get transportation next year, that's, it's, that is a hundred thousand dollar loss within itself. So, plus, those numbers are, are, are gonna be close, then we're looking, so if we have a hundred thousand dollar loss in transportation, um, that leaves about a three hundred and fifty thousand dollar hole for next year. Um, if you add all the, everything, everything together, um, not pretty, but we can fill that hole, how we're gonna fill that, I, the plan to fill that hole currently is, we're gonna use the COVID monies and we're looking at positions that may be vacant to try to fill that. We want to be able to move our teachers on the salary schedule, we don't wanna freeze them, we wanna be able to help them out as well. If you run all that together, it's about a half million dollars. And I think we can close that gap. My hope is in a year, we're back to, back to normal. We have built bound, fund balance over the last, um, four years to the, we've built about a million dollars extra in fund balance, we've done that on purpose, we had that goal to get to twenty-two and a half, twenty-three percent, we're there, and we, we can use fund balance, our COVID funds, to get through the storm, basically. So, does that make any sense whatsoever? Do you have any questions that I can answer for you?
So the, I have a question, with the four hundred and thirty-seven thousand of that two point two trillion that we might receive, is that, is, that's not gonna fill that, that's, you are figuring that in?
Yeah, I've filled, I'm, I'm figuring that in to help fill that gap. So what we're gonna do with those dollars, and this is what they, they really like for you, want us to do, is we are taking a percentage of salaries in this current fiscal year from after March twelfth, so it's twenty percent of regular education teachers, a few, um, title pares and a few special education pares, and we're gonna look to journal entry that revenue into that expense account, and then we can pull our local dollars out. So, we're gonna supply it, money that we've already spent, and that's what they want you to do, 'cause it's easier to track. So that's how, Monica's already got the spreadsheet created, soon as we get the dollars, we can do the journal entry and we're gonna be good to go. So what that will do is it will let us build a little fund balance this year and we can live on that fund balance and hopefully next year at this time, we're sitting back at the fund balance that we currently are. We will deficit spend next year. Does that make sense to everybody? Let's see. So, oh, another piece of funding, and we're, we're not sure how this is gonna work yet, but the governor received, basically, it's not discretionary, but he received an appropriation through that two point two trillion, um, that, um, he is looking at and the commissioner talked today about working to try to, um, work with the governor and his staff to help bridge that digital, that digital divide that MSBA talked about, to try to get, um, internet to areas that, um, had no access. We frankly have, um, places in our school district that don't have cell phone coverage, so if I, I can buy them a hotspot, that, that doesn't do them any good. So, those are, those are items that, um, they're working at, working on at the state level. Um, summer school, um, that plan is ever-evolving, um, Mr. Dalton's gonna fill in a whole lot of things for me, but, um, basically what we are look, what we are looking at currently is, we currently have one class, um, we had one class make, and, um, in summer school, and what we were doing is we had ten kids at a time in there. Um, and then, so that is Coach Swafford's class, so he schedules kids throughout the day, they come in for an hour, and then they go home, the, the next group comes in for an hour, we do not provide transportation. So we are hoping in June, um, we've sent, um, lots of information out to teachers and they are making plans, but we are hoping to do a hybrid summer school in June, um, with courses that make, so that could look like this, it doesn't have to look like this, but this is one way it could look, so you could have, if you had twenty kids enrolled in your summer school class, ten of them would come on Monday, um, the next ten would come on Tuesday, the next kid, ten on Wednesday, the next, so, so on, they would alternate. And we will not provide transportation in June, 'cause we can't provide that social business piece on buses. When those kids were at home, um, on their days that they're not in school, they would have, um, projects to do, there could be some online lessons for those that can get online, um, a wide variety of things. Teachers are, are, are starting to get creative, um, so we appreciate that. We hope in July, um, we can have a full-blown regular summer school and provide transportation to those kids. That is our current plan, but I will be honest with you, um, we're making plans for June now, we'll make plans for July and June, and really, I don't know that in July, um, we're talking about what the start of school in August looks like, um, but I think it's too early to make any hard decisions. Um, we're making, you know, we're trying to prepare for it, but I don't know that we can have, we have all the answers at this point, I don't know that we're gonna have the answers until, um, we get a little closer to time. So those schools that, you know, there's been lots of schools that say, we're going back on this date, I think St. Louis City was going back on August second. I don't know how you can say that today, but that's their decision to make and not mine, so, um, we will start to formulate that plan, we'll keep you all involved in that, we want our parents involved in that and our staff, um, to be sure that everybody's comfortable. Um, frankly, we will have some families that want their kid there today, we do have some parents that want their kids here today and we have some that we may not see next year, um, that, though, they won't be comfortable sending their kid. Um, I just, I think we'll see a few of those. But that is a parent's choice, so, anyway. What did I miss?
I'll just get started, you, you grab me and I'll get it. If I get off track, I'll leave a gap. You know, he's talking about summer school, he's talking about all the surveys and things that we've sent out, and really that's, we just, the target just continues to evolve and move. I think maybe I've mentioned this last month, but we've heard back from the vast majority of our students, as I mentioned, and what we've learned as far as that have internet access, you know, I think you heard him talking video, I think he used the example, hey, we have twenty. I think he used the example, hey, we have, 20% of our kids don't have access. For us, what we found, 65% of the ones who responded have some kind of internet access. So we were 65, 35 roughly that have the access. Now, in practice, once we got started, it was more like 50/50 as far as reliable, consistent internet access. So if there's a segment of the kids, they, they might be able to, some parts of the day, on their phone, hook up to the internet, but as far as doing the lesson, completing activity just wasn't working for them. So that's, that is the information that we have been able to gather out of this. But then we started in on that. And when we talk about summer school making, and this has been the case for as long as I've been here, we've done summer school. We have to have a certain number of students sign up for a class, for that class to make, you say. So we sent that out, that was the next survey, was sent out for students to be able to register for summer school. And with the guidelines we had at that time, it was going to be virtual. And frankly, especially for our younger students, they really had all the virtual they really wanted to do. They wanted to be face-to-face. Side note, we talked about the food pickup, it would have been worth it to come by. I know I've had our principals, you had a car come by, if there were kids in, you would hear lots of squealing because that car would die. And sometimes the kids would cheer also, it was, it was the teachers. It wasn't, listen, both sides, they've missed seeing one another. I don't know my kids, something, they'd come back and.
Retired.
Sitting in the lights. They're tired of each other and me, but. You know, so that, when we started that, the guidelines we had at the time, hey, it's got to be virtual for this two-week period. And we're going to reevaluate. Well, then before we even got to the start, some of those guidelines opened up, hey, in small groups, as long as we can keep distance. So that's why, so we just had the one class make. So they have to come in every day. As long as we can stay in a small group, they can come in shifts. And what's different about that? And it will look different. High school kids, they can drive themselves in. And that, that's just part of the criteria for this class, for the ones who can get there. So they are, they're coming in every day for a period of time. What we're trying to give feedback from our, from our parents now is, hey, if, can you bring your students in on Monday and Wednesday? And you stay all day with our younger ones, you know, part of the day probably makes less sense if you're coming, if you're having a hall. If I can bring them all day.
But it'd be breakfast in the classroom.
Breakfast in the classroom. Lunch in the classroom.
Separate recess.
It is, you know, it's just going to look different. We believe that if we can get to that point and the feedback we've gotten so far, there are lots of folks that they're going to bring, they can sit in front of a teacher, interact with it, whatever it is they're going to cover at that time. We do, we have a large segment of our students that they look forward to summer school. Teachers able to just do some, some different kinds of activities. If you've got them all day, you can tackle some, some fun projects, get more in-depth with some things. But it just may look different from one grade level to the next. That's kind of what we told our teachers. Here are the guidelines, this is the criteria. Within that, if somebody proposes a good idea that's different from what we did set out there, great, let's go. We've got enough kids that are interested in your programs. Because at this point, Dr. Dalton mentioned with transportation, our risk was not going to be able to, you know, issue being, we've got so much demand for that. How are we going to tell who can't drive, who can't, it's a business.
Arkansas is saying currently that six kids can ride a 70-trip passenger bus. We can't do that. You know, we have kids get on the bus right now at 6:30 in the morning. So that, that, for some buses, that's running. So our, we've got an afternoon bus that's probably got 45, 50 kids on it. Can you imagine how long it would take to get those kids six at a time on it? Financially, it's not feasible. It's not feasible, we don't have enough buses, we don't have enough drivers.
No hours in a day.
Yeah. It just doesn't work. So, but it's, it's odd. Now, one of those misters we talked about, and I'll have to talk to bus drivers about this, but we did order an extra mister to sterilize those buses. Since they drop kids off in the morning, I can have a custodian jump on that bus, go from the front to the back and it's sterilized. Do it once a day. It would be really quick and easy. We haven't, haven't gotten in yet, haven't talked to drivers, so that, we did order one just for that purpose.
And that kind of gets into some of the conversations we've had. Looking at next August, you know, there's, there's lots of information out there right now. I know when MSBA released a huge document that covers lots of scenarios. There was a school district in our region yesterday. And I think they were taking some backlash, but as you read through that, it was just scenarios that they were considering. Folks, frankly, we're, we're just discussing such a realm of possibilities. Problems that we are all hoping and praying for is August 24th, we're ready to go like normal. What we're preparing for is all along that.
Between normal and what we've been doing.
It's all along that, that spectrum.
So there, so the commissioner can create a waiver or can waive the start date. So we've talked about that quite a bit. I don't know at this point in time, you know, if we can have some full-blown summer school in July. You know, and we have those, we have so many who moved our buildings many days, most of them to the front, that we should move our start dates as well. So we could, but you know, if we don't have full-blown summer school in July, or if we're not able to, if we figure that out in June, maybe that's something we need to look at. But it's not something we are currently trying to, currently asking for.
The rest is, kind of goes into the professional development part. We are, we're, I mean this when I say this, so we're, we're going to do even more training this summer, especially in that timeframe as we got through summer school. We're getting really intense as far as delivery and remote instruction. And we're hoping like crazy we don't have to do that. This is the first time I plan to be here, and hey, we've got to do this and we hope we don't have to do this. You know, I mean, it's just where we are. We met with that committee maybe a week before last. You know, we know that's something we've, it's just in case that is the scenario we're represented with. It would be as good as bad as it can be. And we hope that it's not the scenario we're presenting.
Okay, alright.
Alright, so discussion and action items. Start with the approval of the bank bids.
So we're at the end of our five-year agreement with Stockman's Bank. So we sent out bank bids and we sent them to all five banks in town. Heard back from, we received a letter, an email, and a verbal confirmation from three of the five that they were choosing not to bid with kind of the financial times that we're in. They didn't feel like they could submit a bid that would, that would be enticing enough for us to move banks. Stockman's was our only reply to that bid. We have a great relationship with Stockman's and have worked very well with them for five years. So our recommendation is to, to remain with Stockman's Bank for the next five years. Obviously, it's renewable every year if something, one party or the other gets upset. And we do have some representatives from Stockman's. Who would you like to?
Yeah, I'm sure you guys don't care, he was here before, before me, and he's now my boss. That's why he's here and I'm here.
Very short, isn't it?
I'm very immigrant, I'm here in Stockman's. But I guess we just came to see if you guys have any more questions about any of the, the documents that we submitted. Obviously, anytime you guys got any questions at all, other than that, you know, feel free to call us at any time.
They've been good partners.
Who did you fix up later?
They met on the bid specs that we asked for. It's not a lucrative business being the depository for a school district because they're not in the building. Currently in our buildings, if you can get through the front door, you can go wherever you want. So the idea is to, we've checked them a couple of different times before they can ever enter the rest of the building. That's what, that's the premise behind it.
And then is the high school, is it kind of?
It's set up that way, it doesn't have all the mechanisms. So it was the second one on the list.